Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tom Weisman. I'm Huron Valley Board of Education President. I'm here to represent not only myself, but the rest of the Board of Education as we represent the community. Tonight, we're going to have an opportunity to provide to you some information as it relates to the election that's coming up in November that's going to have a direct effect on our Board of Education, along with the impact that will have on our students and the opportunities that our students will have. Because of that, we're going to have a Huron Valley Board of Education Candidate Forum. With that in mind, we've invited five students who are really going to provide an opportunity to ask a variety of questions that have a direct impact on our candidates and on the services that they'll provide. These questions are student-focused. These questions are asked and have been delivered by our students, who are leaders within our school community. I know personally how difficult it is to get word out as it relates to nonpartisan candidate forums and candidate opportunities. That in mind, we've really reached out and provided some opportunities for other forums to come forth as it relates to the Board of Education opportunities. There really hasn't been one, so we felt that it was extraordinarily important for us to come up with a nonpartisan, non-biased type format. And with that thought in mind, we've really allowed our students to come up with questions, as I said, and for our candidates really to come up with their responses. With that, what we're going to do is really film the questions that are brought forth by our students, and then they will be sent electronically to our candidates, who will then have an opportunity to respond. They'll respond, and they'll send them back to us, and then we will put them out on social media so that our community is that much more informed. This will happen over the next couple of weeks. So with that in mind, what I'd like to do is start off by asking each of our candidates to really kind of talk about themselves, to really give us an idea of what their background is, how long they've lived in our community, what their thoughts are, and why they're running for the Huron Valley Board of Education.
Hi there. I'm Laura Dodd, and I'd like to first start by thanking the student leaders for coming together to host this forum. It's always wonderful to hear questions from students, and also, I appreciate the opportunity to share this information with our community via the HVSTV and also, social media. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to sharing my answers with you. So, I am running for reelection because I am super passionate about continuing the work we're doing to build a legacy of record investment in Huron Valley schools. Our community has come together to support the schools, and now it's our job to be financially responsible, provide outstanding governance, and make sure we build and invest the money the community has given to the schools, and really invest that money properly. We need to make sure we have great contractors doing good work, and I think it's important that I continue this, because I enjoy doing the work, and I know what it takes to get that done.
I'm Dev Jermet, and I'm running for the Huron Valley School Board. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. I moved to Highland with my family about 35 years ago. One of the factors in choosing Highland was the school system. Huron Valley schools were considered one of the best in the area, even then. My husband and I feel fortunate that our children were raised in this remarkable school district. From Spray Mills and beyond, they obtained an exceptional educational experience that provided them a solid foundation for their future. My son, Jason, graduated from Lakeland and was in the championship Lakeland Marching Band. Yep, I am still proud about that, and he also played basketball. Our daughter Becky graduated from Milford and was a cheerleader. They both graduated from Michigan universities with good grade point averages and are successful in their life choices. Huron Valley was key to their successes. My education and career have provided me with many skills to be successful on the Board of Education. I have my bachelor's degree in business administration with a focus in human resources. I was a power production specialist in the United States Air Force. In this role, I was mainly responsible for training other airmen to operate standby generators. Fun fact, I shot expert with an M16. I was the only female in my squadron to do so. I worked in a number of roles as a human resource professional for over 30 years and achieved my Senior Professional of HR certification during this time. In addition to my military experience, I worked for a Fortune 250 company and was responsible for multiple sites and states. Some of the applicable... Sorry about that. Sorry. Some of the applicable skills and experience I obtained are talent acquisition, business, hiring, HR management, benefits management, acquisitions, which was assimilating new companies, training, orientation, payroll, employment regulations, career development, and others. In my role, I hired many managers and other executive positions. A key element in recruiting is to look for skill set, not necessarily industry experience. If a candidate has the necessary skill set, the business can be learned. Although I do not have experience in education or on a school board, the experience and skill sets I bring are a great match and complement for our Huron Valley School Board team. I am running for this office because I want to go back to our community. One of the most important functions of a community is to ensure our students are given the best education, experiences, and tools to allow them to be successful in whichever path they choose in life. Our teachers also need the tools and support to make these goals possible. As a board member, if elected, I will work with our parents, teachers, and students to achieve these goals. Only together can we achieve these goals for our students' future.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Cotter, and I'm running for reelection for our Huron Valley Board of Education. One of the reasons I'm running is that I'm really an advocate for Huron Valley. I've spent most of my teaching career and my adult career working here in Huron Valley, and I'm excited about the new things moving forward. Our strategic plan is really directing itself to new things for Huron Valley and for our students. That's why I'm running. I want to stick around and see how it goes.
My name is Brenda Puska, and I'm running for the Huron Valley Schools School Board this November 5th. I'm an inquisitive, no-nonsense person who believes in asking the tough questions and valuing the input of our district families, business owners, and elected officials. I'm committed to bringing the issues that matter to you to the Board with honesty and integrity. I am passionate about mentorship and education for our students, supporting them, and support for our staff. Transparency is key, and while our district has made strides, I believe it can be even better. We need to hold ourselves and our fellow Board members accountable, and most importantly, we need to give parents and community members a stronger voice in matters of school culture, curriculum, and budget. I'm dedicated to working on uniting our schools and community. My decision to run was made after attending the last two years of Monday Board of Education meetings and many subcommittee meetings, particularly in finance and operations. I believe I fully understand the time commitment necessary after many conversations with current Board of Education members. I also quickly realized that many in our community aren't fully aware of how our district spends its money. With the recent passing of proposed expenses, it's more important than ever to scrutinize every piece of spending and ensure we're making wise financial decisions. In this volatile time, it's crucial for everyday people to stand up and take responsibility. I'm ready to work with you to shape our district so it better aligns with our community's goals and values. I, Brenda Puska, am asking for you to vote for me on November 5th to help make this a reality, and please remember to flip the ballot over. School Board is toward the end of a very large ballot. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Seekhan Yusin. I attend International Academy West, and I'm a senior, and I am representing HVS Athletics and also class officers. My question for you is, how can the Board of Education and its members help promote all HVS athletic teams within the community and implement ways to recognize their achievements?
Well, I must say, certainly with Huron Valley, now that we've decided that we're going to keep an east and west division, both of our sport teams, all of our sport teams are doing a good job, and I think it creates more interest in activity here in the district. In particular, I certainly like the fact that we can create opportunities for our middle school kids and after-school programs for elementary to be involved in our athletics. That's a direction I want to see us go in. I think it's important that all students have opportunities. You know, the other side effect of sports is that it sure brings families together. That's how families meet families, and that, I think, creates a real good community here in Huron Valley. So I look forward to our sports programs being more available to all students and all children.
I think the Board of Education and HVS already does a great job promoting athletic teams and recognizing their achievements. However, I am going to give you a fun fact. Board members aren't always aware of all things. If I wanted to know about our athletic teams and their stats, I'd want a type of athletic ambassador. We could have a student athlete from each team fill in the board members about matches, games, meets, and how our athletes performed. I believe having students involved will enhance the experience, and we will be able to recognize how impactful our athletic program can be. Players work hard, our parents support endlessly, and as board members, we would be able to celebrate and recognize all the teams.
The lessons that our students learn in athletics are some of those lessons that they will take with them for a lifetime. The things we learn in classrooms are super important, but the things that students learn on the field and with teams can really stick with them. We certainly have curricular programs that are important, but certainly, our athletic programs are important as well. Huron Valley Schools has both programs within the schools and with community organizations, starting from the littlest kids all the way through our varsity athletics in our high school. I talked earlier about the loss of some of our local journalism, and I am happy with how our district has stepped up with communication on our social media platforms and some other places to really promote the great things that are happening in our athletic arena, from the equestrian team to the football team to soccer and all of them in between. I'm glad that we are able to do that. I think we need to keep doing it, and I would love, as a board member, to have students come into board meetings more often, meet us. Winning teams, losing teams, every single team that comes in is one that's learned a lesson, and I think that's important.
Sports play an important role in school. One of the key ways the Board of Education can promote our athletic teams is through funding as the budget allows. When doing so, all of the athletic teams need to be given fair consideration based on their needs, not just on what is the most popular sport or team. Some school sports can be really expensive. Any school-funded sport should be available to all students who are able to make the team. Additional funding should be allocated for students whose families are able to demonstrate financial need. Other options such as fundraising need to be considered. With over 7,000 students and our parents and teachers collectively, we should be able to identify some great solutions.
Hello, my name is Ayla Campbell. I'm an 11th grader at Milford High School, and I'm representing the theater for the Huron Valley school system. And my question is, how would you work to support both the extracurricular and co-curricular activities with both the students and the staff?
This is an interesting question, because the role of a board member is limited to hiring and evaluating the superintendent, approving the budget, and setting policy. So whatever the board does has to fit in those areas. I know it's the goal of HVS to be a AAA district, supporting academics, arts, and athletics, and I think we do a pretty good job of those things. As a Board of Education member, I can support those co-curricular and extracurricular activities by helping make sound budget decisions and reinforcing policies to allow all students an opportunity to participate. Whether it's reviewing budgets for athletics, setting policies around pay-to-participate fees, or even just showing up for a school event, I can show my support by making decisions that signify my support for these activities while balancing the needs of the district as a whole.
Well, Ayla, I think the most important thing, and you'll know, we now have a new fine arts director, someone to help our staff and the students be more involved in those opportunities we want to create for our kids. I've always been a supporter and love attending all of the programs, but by this way, having a coordinator in charge, we can help coordinate and provide these opportunities for our students. That's how I think I could be involved.
A few years ago, I participated in a Board of Education ad hoc committee that was specifically looking at student participation in the arts and the athletics and other activities. It was a committee that really helped pull together both qualitative and quantitative data. We were able to look at who participates, how they participate, where they participate, what percentage of students participate, and some of the barriers to participation. The barriers were really interesting to me, and one of the barriers that sticks with me even to this day without looking back at notes or anything is the access to reliable transportation to and from school if you want to participate in, either before-school activities or after-school activities if you rely on bus transportation. So this is something that HVS certainly can work on and should work on, is figuring out how to make sure that kids who want to participate in these activities have access and that transportation isn't a barrier. We are fortunate in the Huron Valley School District to have both our outstanding transportation department that works specifically with the school, but also WODA and People's Express and a few other transit programs that can operate outside of school hours for students. We need to make sure that both the transportation barrier and also the cost barrier for some of these extracurricular activities are eliminated for students who want to participate. So I think those are two really important aspects to participation. As with athletics, participating in the arts and other co-curricular activities are what can sometimes motivate and inspire kids to get to class, because then they get to do those co-curricular activities after school, but also help students develop skills that we could never develop in every student in every classroom. Communication skills, problem-solving skills, all of those really, really important life skills that you're going to need in just about every job as an adult in the marketplace.
The answer to this question is the same as my answer to the previous question on sports. We need to support all approved co-curricular and extracurricular activities fairly, based on need, through funding as the budget allows. We can work with students, parents, and teachers to identify other solutions for additional funding as needed.
Hello, my name is Jake Burbick, and I attend Lakeland High School. I am representing the Student Council of Lakeland High School, and my question is, what do you think HVS is doing well, and what do you think still needs improvement?
Some of my favorite things about HVS are our teachers. We have so many highly skilled, talented, and dedicated educators. We have Harbor High, an amazing example of an alternative high school. We have IA West with its very challenging curriculum. We have a fantastic united band, and our arts programming is excellent. If I were to pinpoint one thing needing improvement, it would be the way HVS communicates with our community. I hope to bring a much more open and thoughtful style of communication, which I believe would bring our buildings closer together. We are one district, not just 15 different schools. Open and honest communication is key to me.
Well, I think Huron Valley is doing a great job already of providing opportunities for kids. And you know, I think we've worked very hard to protect our kids, and I have to say, our safety systems that we now have in place is one thing I'm very proud of, and I feel that our kids are attending safe and secure buildings every day. That's, I think, something we're doing great. Likewise, I think we are doing a good job with instruction, but moving forward down the road, I'm hoping to see with some of these improvements that perhaps our state test scores and Huron Valley scores could go up a bit. I have all the confidence that our staff and our students can make it.
Huron Valley has good schools and has served our community well over the years. We have a high graduation rate and are rated in the top 30% of Michigan schools. But just like in business, once you meet one goal, additional improvement and goals are raised. According to the OECD, based on testing of 15-year-old students around the world, US students ranked 34th out of 81 countries in math and 16th out of 81 countries in science. US math and science scores have been about the same in the past 18 years. This is an important area where I propose we could do better.
Thank you, Jake. I absolutely love bragging about HVS, and I am always open for suggestions for improvement. So both of these things are things that have to be on our minds all the time as we make our schools the best possible place for kids to learn and grow and succeed. So right now, I would say, thanks to our community, we are able to make record investments in our infrastructure. So we will have buildings that are well-maintained, that are ready for learning, that have the technical capacity to do some innovative programming, and also, hopefully, will be really inspiring and comfortable for people to learn. Those are all things that I think are going well. I'm very proud of how we have been able to integrate students, staff, educators, leaders, community members, municipal leaders, all sorts of people from our community into the decision-making process. So this isn't just a top-down infrastructure project for the schools, but it's really a project that brings everybody along with it, and I think that that's a really important way for us to lead going forward, and I'm really proud of how we've done that. As it relates to improvement, I'm all ears. I am someone who goes into a room and can always pick out the good things and the things that need improvement. I think certainly figuring out ways to make sure that kids are engaged and motivated and ready to go. I think communication can always be improved. I think there's a lot of different opportunities for us to really engage and ask people, what do you need? How can we make things better? And I think that that's an important thing for us to do going forward.
Hi, my name is Alana Banir. I am a senior at Milford High School, and I am representing the Student Council. Do you have any specific changes you would want to make to the curriculum in our districts? And if so, why?
Specific recommended changes to the curriculum should come from teachers and other education professionals. However, I can speak in a broader sense to considerations of our curriculum development. First, the curriculum needs to reflect the job market and what opportunities will be available to our students when they graduate. Second, the world is rapidly changing, and so is the job market. We need to be flexible and willing to adjust our curriculum to ensure our students have the competencies to compete in the changing job market. My final point, the curriculum needs to be diverse to address the career goals and talents of all of our students. Within my authority as a board member, I will partner and work with our education professionals to ensure we have the most effective curriculum possible to meet the needs of all of our students.
The Board of Education is tasked with hiring our superintendent, not with reviewing and approving curriculum. Curriculum is the responsibility of the central office team, and as a board member, I would make recommendations and thoughtfully consider what the team presents. The Board does approve spending funds on curriculum, which means the members should have some understanding of what our teachers are teaching. As a board member, I would look at the data of our measurables. Are our students scoring well? Are they on track? Are they improving? If no, then we must go back to the curriculum and teaching methods to find out why. What I won't do is blindly approve curriculum expenditures without understanding the data and the why.
You know, Alana, Huron Valley has worked very hard, I think, to create instructional opportunities and training for all of our students. But the one thing I see moving forward in the future is more focused on our career and tech ed programs. Right now, our trades need kids, they need adults, they need skilled workers to be available to help with all of the things that are needed to take care of our infrastructure, and I think that training can start right here in Huron Valley schools. Years ago, we supported some more of these programs, but moving forward, I think it's become more and more important that we can help kids get trained and have skills before they go out in the workforce. That's something that I think is very important.
Thanks so much for this thought-provoking question. I think it's something that's on the mind of every single person who works and is a leader in public education, as well as every parent, every family, every guardian, every kid. Curriculum is challenging, and there are a lot of different players in the development of the curriculum for our students. We take the lead from the Michigan Department of Education, and of course, the Federal Department of Education as it relates to curriculum. And then, as a school, we find the resources and tools to present the curriculum that's given to us by the state of Michigan. We work really hard to focus on not just the core curriculum, but also the extracurricular and the core curricular classes that really provide a bit of extra to our students and our schools to help bring it all together, give them things that are tailored for their interests and their needs, and also provide some career exploration. At HVS, we also are fortunate to have opportunities for career tech ed and some of the other hands-on programs, both in our buildings, but also with Oakland School's technical campus. I think these curricular opportunities are great for our students. Can there always be improvements? Yes. I think the absolute most important thing we have to do for the students who go to HVS is make sure that they have the curriculum and the support they need in order to be successful. Every student learns at a different speed, comes to us at a different level, and has different goals. We need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those kids so they can be successful in the future.
Hi, I'm Leanna Yen, and I'm a senior at the International Academy West, and I'm part of the class officers. I represent the student body, and my question is, what are the top three priority issues facing HVS, and if elected, how would you address these issues?
Great question. Appreciate it. I think number one, and I've mentioned it many times, so if you've heard the other questions, it's a continuation on this, because it is such a big job for the Board to be a part of, which is the bond investment and the major infrastructure improvements. I think it's important to continue a legacy of financial responsibility as it relates to this bond work. Our community has graciously approved of this. This is community dollars going back into community schools, and we need to make sure we are fiscally responsible and also responsible to ensure that the people who are doing the work in our schools are the best possible people to do the work. They're safe, they're well-trained, and they're making sure that the physical building and the physical plant is as well-done as possible to make sure that we're not having to spend nickels and dimes in the future repairing shoddy work. So all of those things are important, and I think it's important that I continue on to be able to see this through. The next thing that I think is important for our schools is a little different. I'm a person who has worked a lot in communication, and one of the big holes in our community right now is a lack of local journalism. We have a few local papers that cover some of what's happening in Milford, Highland, White Lake, and Commerce, but none that are based in the Huron Valley District. And I think it's important for us to think about, how do we communicate in the community, not just with parents and families, not just with kids, not just with educators, but for those people who the only thing they know about our schools is they see them driving by? What's happening? The successes that we're having, the challenges we have, the opportunities for involvement our community members have in our schools? I think that's a really important thing that's a big hole in our community, and I know community leaders in Milford and Highland and White Lake and Commerce are talking about this, and I think it's an important conversation to continue, and I think it's an important conversation for Huron Valley schools to be part of. And then finally, advocacy. I am an avid advocate for public education, and I have been really proud over the last few years to be our representative on the Government Relations Committee for Oakland Schools. I've traveled to Washington to meet with our senators and our elected representatives in Congress. Super proud to have every single elected representative, including our two congressional reps, Lisa McLean and Alyssa Slotkin, sign on to fully fund the IDEA Act, which has been around for about 50 years and has never been fully funded by the government. I think advocacy is really important, because public education policy and public education innovation comes not just from school boards and local communities, but it comes from the people who make the laws and fund the schools. So getting them involved in what works for us and what we need is really important. So I think continuing advocacy is a main priority of mine.
My top three priority issues are safety, educational excellence, and implementation of the strategic plan. For safety, we must ensure that we are doing everything possible to protect our students. This includes securing our school with strong windows, doors, alarms, cameras, creating an emergency program, and anything else we can to ensure our students are protected. Some of these items are addressed already in a strategic plan. While we have a limited budget, this is a critical area that we need to consider all options, as students' life is priceless. We also need to have an ongoing strong program in place from kindergarten to graduation to eradicate bullying in school and also in cyberbullying. Huron Valley has been diligent in addressing safety, but with the changing world, we need to continue to focus and act on safety. Educational excellence? I have addressed this in both questions, two and three. We need to set a goal to be in the top 20% of the Michigan schools. Finally, the implementation of this strategic plan. It's a current top priority, and we require a significant portion of our focus and resources. The school board needs to be diligent in the oversight of this project, including focusing on ensuring we meet budget or better yet, come in below budget. including focusing on ensuring we meet budget or better yet, come in below budget. The timelines for the projects need to be met. We want our students to start enjoying the benefits of these projects and start obtaining these cost savings as soon as possible.
Well, that's the tough question because there are priorities, and I can't address them all. Of course, safety was one, and I think that will continue to be an important part of Huron Valley. We need to continue to build a culture. The more we can integrate and all of this training into our daily activities, everything will become and easily be reactive. It'll just come naturally. So if you see something, say something. I think that's very important. Always one of the other opportunities we talk about is we want to have classes available to all of our students that are meaningful to them and meaningful to their future. And I have to certainly thank our teaching, learning, and technology staff because they're working very hard to come up with planned programming to meet the needs of our kids. That's probably priority number two. And priority number three for me, I think, is bringing equity within the district, that one school has the same as another school, and our middle schools are the same. I think having the same opportunities available to all students will allow all kids to do good. I'm very excited about the future for Huron Valley. And with our new school improvement plan, the fact that we might build a new campus here on the west side of our district is very important to me because I know the one over here at Lakeland and White Lake and Lakewood provides so many more opportunities that if we can mirror that same thing on the west side where we will have a middle school, a high school, and an elementary all on the same campus, I'm excited for the fact that we can share instruction, we can share bus rides, we can share teaching and learning with all three campuses. So I think that will be an opportunity and a priority moving forward for Huron Valley.
My top three issues are bond spending, transparency, and parents' rights. I would address bond spending just like I do my own budget at work by weighing our wants versus our needs and critically evaluating whether we are spending our bond dollars wisely and whether we are choosing the right projects for our community. I'd love to get stakeholder input on how taxpayers feel about each part of our projects. I think it's important to weigh how we spend as it's truly building the future of how HVS looks and operates and will be our footprint for decades to come. On the subject of transparency, I believe we still need to work on our communication within the district to our community and be very plain with the language used. I want to see a better understanding from the point of view of our stakeholders and how HVS works for their students. I want to help bridge the gap between our administrators, our educators, and our parents. Parents' rights is probably my favorite topic, and when I talk to people about school, I often hear parents feeling ignored as if their thoughts and ideas mean nothing to the district. From a legal standpoint, most all students are minors and therefore fall under the care and responsibility of parents. It's not HVS's job to raise kids. It is their job to educate them and in conjunction with parent involvement. We really need to get back to talking with each other and sharing our knowledge, ideas, volunteer opportunities, and stop closing schools off to parents. Schools should not be a prison. They should be areas of enrichment, excitement, and learning where parents' rights are honored and respected, not pushed aside under the blanket of trying to help kids be autonomous.